Apologies for that. We can't interfere with modern nature. So at this time, would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Okay, with the pledge completed, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Bassisi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sunaika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. As a reminder, these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Moving on to the first order of business, it's to approve minutes from the previous meeting. There's only one set of minutes to approve this evening, and that's for the July 27th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It's unanimous, and the ayes have it. The July 27th minutes are approved. Moving on, I do not have anything for the mayor's report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As requested last meeting, we'll adjust and provide the Economic Development Committee update during the ward report. So Economic Development Committee did get together last evening. I'll try and be brief in my comments, but it was an action-packed meeting. First, we welcome Nick Martinelli, who the mayor recently appointed and City Council approved as a member. He's a local business owner for Robin Hood Roofing. Attorney Wolfe conducted committee training, similar to the one we had, but I think the deck was about 10 slides compared to the 40 that we had, so that was the running joke at last night's meeting. We received an update on the restaurant and retail incentive that council passed recently. And then I do have copies of the collateral that were here. Staff put together what we're calling one-pagers and also provided an outline of 15 marketing channels that they're looking at doing. So EDC provided some feedback, some tweaks that should be recommended. So I do have paper copies here of the drafts if anybody would like to look at them as well. We continued with our 2021-2022 goals discussion, and that's one of the key items that staff brought up that they'll be providing us at future meetings is percent of occupancy. Is that we thought that was a key number. Initially, the numbers do look up, but it was a number that seemed to be readily available. So staff will start tracking that and providing updates to EDC. And we did discuss making sure the five goals that we identified at the July meeting have some type of measurement around so we can say, was it successful? So using the restaurant incentive for a sample, are we going to deem that successful if 10 restaurants or new retail spaces sign up? So that's going to be future discussion as we go through the goals. And then just real high-level updates on the goals. There were five identified that we're going to kind of bite off and take on in different meetings. The north industrial area improvement and cross-boundary marketing is the area of the industrial park. We talked about potentially leveraging the co-op, the new chamber co-op with Palatine and Arlington Heights, for some type of plan for the industrial park that we all share. Martha Corner was going to reach out to her peers as the business advocates in Arlington and Palatine to start initial dialogue and possibly them join us at a future EDC meeting. The Kirchhoff Road quarter, wayfinding signage and streetscaping is, this is part of a comprehensive plan, as council members know. And the city staff talked with EDC about including appropriate proposed dollar amount in the 2022 budget that will be coming before council. Certainly still details to be worked out there, but that is one that we thought we might be able to accommodate in 2022. The Walmart shopping center and Outlets area is common area improvement. That one's going to have a significant dollar impact to it. A lot of it's outside of the city's control since it, I think, was six or eight property owners in that section. So that one's out of a little bit of a holdoff. The Arlington Park redevelopment that we talked about last time, we are going to pace with that right now, clearly not knowing how that's going to develop, but we're keeping our fingers on the pulse. And then the post-COVID business support strategies, we renamed that to the Support Local Campaign, and this had a fair amount of discussion last night on ideas of how we could help with that. So I think that's going to be one that we bring back with staff input and then dry erase board or brainstorm at the next meeting to go ahead and look at some future details on that as well. So that was, in a nutshell, a lot of the activity that took place there. I'm just trying to take a look here at my notes. Oh, Martha did also provide an update because we talked about last time what we're hearing from the corporate complex. It's like the atrium center, the golf plaza, the large ones and their post-COVID plans. And obviously, that's a country pandemic and world pandemic as commercial real estate. There was an initial conversation with the owner of the atrium, is that they're trying to show it, but it's extremely tough to show space when there's nobody occupying it. So that's what we're hearing from the building owners, is that there's places that might be interested. They're limited right now, given the state of everything that's going on, but it's also hard to sell a property when there's nobody using it. And on average, they average about 10 staff members in that atrium complex on a day. So that was some feedback directly from one of the business owners. And that was, we're going to meet. That's the last part. We did adjust our meeting for the Labor Day holiday, so our next meeting is going to be, let's look at my calendar here, September the 13th, because the first Monday would be Labor Day, so we'll be meeting Monday, September 13th.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Are there any other ward reports? Okay, seeing no further ward reports, we'll now move on to the section where we open the floor to the public for the next 20 minutes. Prior to calling the names listed on the sign-in sheet, just want to repeat the ground rules. So any person who wishes to speak to address the City Council at this time for public comment shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or the city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and of course, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With this, the first name on the sign-in sheet is Len Prina.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My sign-in tonight is about business development in downtown Rolling Meadows. I'm here to speak about supporting Leaky Keg. I have been working and known this family for a number of years. They've gone from being a private, primitive business to a LLC, and they have, I can recall having meetings with them in the Chamber Council four or five years ago when they were attempting to start their first business plan. And one of the things that I liked was their mission statement, because I still have copies of their original plan. And the one thing I'd like to read for you, and I like their little, it's catch-hard drip. Now, I'm not associated with Leaky Keg. I'm just a supporter for business in Rolling Meadows. That's the only reason I'm here. But anyway, it says they're searching for a home in the northwest suburbs. And the only thing I disagreed with their mission statement at the time is they said, "Thanks for your municipality's interest." I said, "No, thanks for Rolling Meadows' interest in Leaky Keg Brewing." As the craft beer movement continues to mature, it has become evident that full-flavored beer with endless style options are here to stay. A craft brewery can have many positive effects for a community, and Leaky Keg Brewing is looking for a place to call home and set roots. Leaky Keg will become an anchor for its community and a source of its civic pride. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out. I know that, you know, those of you on the economic development, I've, you know, have copies of the original business plan. I'm sure some of you are already there, but this would be a great diamond for downtown Rolling Meadows. I mean, they support the community. If you're coming out to Wind Down by the Creek on Friday, I'm told there'll be a couple barrels of their product there on Friday night. And so I ask you to support Leaky Keg. You know, we give business incentives to restaurants and others, so when you're looking at what you, the future, and when they come forward to look at buying or purchasing property in Rolling Meadows, maybe you can come up with another incentive, whether it's licensing fees, outdoor seating, or maybe on the purchase price of it. I think they would be a great addition to the city of Rolling Meadows. So I just thought I wanted to come forward and express my support. The second comment I have is that tonight you will be approving a search committee for a new city manager, and I wanted to share these thoughts with the council. I believe that committee should look at the, for a company that we could pay for a, the position of city manager and assistant city manager to update their job description. It's been over 20 years since any of this has been done, and, you know, the residents have heard that you want or need, or we need, an assistant city manager. So for going forward with looking for a city manager, maybe we need to have someone who has experience with that on the outside. Write us a new job description and get input from the council of exactly what they would like to see with there. So if you're willing to spend $100,000 or so for an assistant city manager, maybe the investment of $10,000 would be a good thing for the citizens of Rolling Meadows as you go forward with the search. I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good evening, and I hope the power stays till the end of the evening. Good night.
Thank you. And, excuse me, I'm informed that there are two other signatures on the sign-in sheet, but they are here from ATS Sortomat, and they're available to speak. They don't wish to speak at this time, but if there are questions from the council under ordinance line item B, ordinance number 21-40, we can go ahead and make a motion to open the floor at that time, just so you guys know. That said, that now concludes the time for the floor being opened to the public. This brings us to pending items. The first item, line item A, ordinance number 21-39 at this time, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sunaika.
Heard the memo that we received from the deputy city clerk. I move to amend, or rather, to delete the line in the...
Alderman Sunaika, it's already been amended?
Oh, it's already amended.
Yeah, yeah. The memo was just to inform the council in advance of the meeting, so there's no necessity to make these amendments?
Apologies, I have an older packet.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item at this time? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 21-40 at this time, is to authorize the approval of the final plat of Meadowbrook re-subdivision number three, a variation from section 122-163, to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 244 to 196, and relief pursuant to section 18-246 to modify certain parking space dimensions to combine two buildings on two lots at 5521 and 5655 Meadowbrook Court into one lot for ATS Sortomat. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item C, it's ordinance number 21-41. It's to amend section 122-78(c)(2)B of the zoning ordinance of the city of Rolling Meadows to modify allowed sizes for detached accessory garages in residential districts from 864 square feet and 624 square feet to 864 square feet for all residential zoning districts. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no discussion, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. Tonight, it consists of two items. Those items are D and E. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the two ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. The first, line item D, ordinance number 21-00 at this time, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic, in for first reading, as well as line item E, ordinance number 21-00, to authorize the disposal of surplus city property and equipment, also in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will move forward for second reading. This now brings us to new business, and it's a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for August 10, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the bills on warrant? Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, for the second. Is there any discussion to approve the payment of bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Excuse me. With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This takes us to the consent resolutions on tonight's agenda. This consists of seven items. Those items are G through M. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman O'Brien.
Item M, please.
Okay. Any others wish to be removed? All right, seeing no further items to be removed, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the six resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second.
Beginning with line item G, resolution number 21-r-68 is to award a contract for grant consulting services. Line item H, resolution number 21-r-69 is to appoint Melissa Gallagher as IPBC delegate representative and Joyce DeLeone as the alternate representative. Line item I, resolution number 21-r-70 is to appoint Melissa Gallagher as IMRF delegate representative and Joyce DeLeone as the alternate representative. Line item J, resolution number 21-r-71 is to appoint Melissa Gallagher as Irma delegate representative and Joyce DeLeone as alternate representative. Line item K, which is resolution number 21-r-72, is to appoint city representatives to the Northwest Municipal Conference. And line item L, resolution number 21-r-73, is to designate a director and alternate directors as city representatives to the Solid Waste Agency of North Cook County, also known as SWANK. The question is, shall the six resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us back to line item M, resolution number 21-r-74. It's to approve the creation of a city manager hiring committee. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Since you pulled this, you're first on the floor for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll be brief on this. I just pulled this based on my comments, based on resident input at the special meeting last week, and again, some additional third ward resident input at the Corn Fest on Saturday. I'm not in favor for the previous comments, so I'm not going to re-hatch those from last Wednesday night's special meeting. So I will not be in support of this based on third ward resident feedback as well as going to the next one. Nothing against Alderman Sunaika or Alderman Bassisi, but not being in favor of a hiring committee. I am not going to also be in favor for the appointment of my two peers as alderpeople to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. While we're on this subject, I just want to be very clear about the intent and purpose of the hiring committee, and it is not to hire any individual. What it's to do is screen the resumes and bring the most qualified individuals forward and cut out the ones that clearly miss the mark in that capacity. The two members of council here are just an aid in moving all appropriate resumes to the City Council for the determination of who gets hired, just for clarification for residents at home.
I appreciate that.
Any further comments or discussion on this item? Okay, without any further comments or questions, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the resolution is adopted. This now brings the council to other business and reports. As you can see, the first item here is the mayor's appointments, and at this time, I'm looking to take two individual members of the City Council and add them via appointment to the city manager hiring committee. The first name listed is Alderman Lara Sunaika, and at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve her appointment. Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. There's a second, Alderman McHale. Thank you. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, the question is, will Alderman Lara Sunaika be appointed to the hiring committee for city manager? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
No.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, Alderman Sunaika, you are now appointed to the hiring committee. The same notion on the same subject stands for Alderman John Bassisi. Is there a motion to appoint Alderman John Bassisi to the city manager's hiring committee?
Some, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts, for the second. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, the question is, will Alderman John Bassisi be appointed to the city manager hiring committee? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
No.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Alderman John Bassisi is also appointed to the city manager hiring committee. I don't have any proclamations to make this evening. Are there any reports from the city clerk tonight?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. That brings us now to city staff reports. The first item on here is the community items of interest, and for this, I'll defer to temporary city manager Gallagher. When you're ready, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Good evening. For tonight's topics to mention, the next Friday Rock is scheduled for Friday, September the 10th. Music for the September 10th Friday Rock will be provided by the group Boy Band Review, and they are a boy ensemble tribute band. Come out and enjoy the night with friends and family. The environmental committee is selling duck race tickets throughout the community. Residents may stop by the finance cashier at City Hall to purchase duck race tickets too. Buy your duck for $5 or a five-pack for $20. Cheer your ducks on at the September 10th Friday's Rock event. The duck race is scheduled from 6, at 6:30 PM. Proceeds from the duck race will support conservation projects in Rolling Meadows, and the duck race is brought to you by the Rolling Meadows Park District, Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee, and the Historical Museum, and we thank you for your support. Tickets are being sold at the front counter in finance, so please unstop on by. The next city market is scheduled for Saturday, August 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Community Church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Thank you to everyone who participated in the Police Department Family Movie Night on Saturday, July 31st. This year's movie was Toy Story 4, and it was a hit with kids and adults alike. Thank you to the volunteers and city staff who volunteered at National Night Out on Tuesday, August 3rd. The Police Department and all of the city departments thank Rolling Meadows residents for making it an awesome national night out, and we will see you next year. The Friday, August 13th, this Friday, August 13th, is the Sixth Annual Wind Down by the Creek event, and there will be beer, wine, and food to purchase as you listen to music at Kimball Hill Park from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The music actually runs from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and this year's music is Roots Rock Society, which is a reggae, calypso, and soul music band. That's from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and then Simple, which is from music from all genres, from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and the forecast is looking much better than this evening. The Meadows Cruise Nights are back, thanks to Meadows Christian Fellowship located at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. The cruisers will be around from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on the following Fridays, August 27th and September 3rd. Please join the free family fun at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. If you want additional information, please visit www.meadowscrewnights.com. A big thank you to the Community Church of Rolling Meadows at 2720 Kirchhoff Road, who conducted their annual Corn Fest. It was a hit with the community. The August newsletter can be found on the city's website, so please visit www.citirm.org and click on the News and Views tab. And always, please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows. It's more important than ever to support our big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. So please shop local. The Business and Community Showcase will take place Thursday, September 23rd, at Meridian Banquets and Conference Center, 1701 West Algonquin Road, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The Business-to-Business Meet and Greet, known as B2B, is from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the showcase opens to the community. Residents are encouraged to stop by and say hello. There's no charge to attend. It's a family-friendly event, and it's a casual atmosphere to visit with Rolling Meadows businesses and to learn more about what they have to offer residents. Do you have a crime tip or information that may help the Rolling Meadows Police Department? Please contact Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers at area code 847-590-7867, or 590STOP. I do have one more to mention, Mayor. The notice that we just recently received this evening from FEMA came from our Fire Chief Moxley and Deputy Fire Chief Sutter. There is going to be an emergency alert system, a wireless emergency alert tomorrow, August 11th, at 1:20 PM, and there's a potential rain date if there is one for August 25th.[1671.11] 11th, at 1:20 p.m., and there's a potential rain date if there is one for August 25th. And this is for wireless devices, television and radio, and there's no siren activation with this test. It's going to last about 20 minutes. Just important to give you a heads-up in case you get calls from residents. It's also posted on social media and community assigned, too.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and we will spread the word so residents are not caught off guard and concerned. Moving on from the community items of interest, we have the July Traffic Review Committee Report, and for that, Director Horn, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief report. We had a resident submit a online request to review the intersection of Weber and Central, where we recently installed stop signs that were lighted. That request came in very shortly after the signs were installed. It was the opinion of the entire committee that we should give the signs an opportunity to exist for a while before we made another alteration to that intersection. As I indicated in the report, currently, we've received several thank yous from residents and elected officials. So at this time, unless there's a concern provided by any of the aldermen, we'd prefer to just allow it to exist for a while and see if it does handle all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Director Horn. Moving on to the third item here, it's the August 17th, 2021 Committee of the Whole draft agenda. And for this, we will circle back to you, temporary city manager Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. For August 17th, the committee of the whole agenda has seven items currently. We have the 2022 to 2026 Capital Improvement Program, American Rescue Plan funding. This is the federal government funding that the city is allotted to receive, the building code update, warning sirens, COVID-19 in the city, continuation of a GoFundMe discussion, emergency fund, or an angel fund for the city, the Salvation Army 2021 program additional funding discussion, and those are the seven items.
Thank you for sharing those items. Why don't we keep this moving forward with August 27th city council draft agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. August 24th, we will have a motion to deviate for the Police Department Life Saving Award. For under pending, we have the emergency, state of emergency due to COVID-19, authorize the sale of personal property, or second readings on those. Under consent ordinances, we have the first reading for state of emergency within Rolling Meadows due to COVID-19, approve an ordinance for approving a recapture agreement for 2800 Brockway, our warrant, three consent resolutions, roadway patching operations at various locations, purchase and installation of gates at Public Works Facility and accept the public utility 2800 Brockway, are typical items under Business and Reports and closed session items.
Thank you for sharing that, and my apologies for saying the 27th. I have that on my sheet here. My apologies, it's the 24th. Moving on to the next item, it is matters not on the agenda. Are there matters not on the agenda? Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, hard to believe that school is back in session starting tomorrow for Rolling Meadows High School. So I'm going to circle back and to Chief Nowacki on a conversation we had, it seems like forever ago, but a couple months ago, on traffic concerns on Central, especially with the high school and high schoolers driving down Central with residents' concerns and the plan for moving forward this school year.
Thank you for sharing. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? All right.
Chief Nowacki has an update on that for us.
Oh, chief, you have an update. I apologize. I didn't see eye contact. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, we will have increased traffic out there. Every year when school starts, we always assign officers to those schools to re-educate the students, the parents that travel those areas, so you will see some extra enforcement. Also, Central Road, we did do some improvements, as Director Horn mentioned. We increased some visibility and some stop signs, and we added no-through traffic signage. So like I said, we will have some extra stepped-up enforcement.
Thanks, chief. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? All right, seeing no further matters not on the agenda, there is a request to go into closed session. It consists of three items. The first item is land sales under 5 ILCS 120-2C6 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act for the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by a public body. The second item is pending litigation under 5 ILCS 120/2C11 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act to consider litigation when an action against a public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. And the third item, under personnel of 5 ILCS 120/2C1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. It does require a motion and a roll call vote in order to go into closed session. Do I have that motion? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the second. Is there any discussion on entering into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yep.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any further action upon returning to open session. So with that, all members who are not necessary, the audience are welcome to leave. Have a wonderful evening.